Thanks everybody for coming here. It's June 1st, 2022. We're going to start the committee of the whole meeting. I think we're going to... We are going to move to interview some of the candidates for the Citizens Review Board. So what I recommend is we go in caucus room and we hold private interviews instead we do it in the public eye here. So we do have Mr. Chicharelli here, so why don't we all meet in the back room and we'll start the interview process. We have three candidates tonight. Hello, you gotta put this down. Am I right?
And, uh, anybody know where Samantha is? No? I'll give her a couple minutes to show up.
Thank you.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven pieces. Anybody? Okay. We don't have anything further to discuss, so what we'll do is we'll recess for a couple minutes and then we'll start the pre-meeting.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks.
We got recess for five minutes. Thank you.
None of this stuff that's ever been.
Yes.
And anybody know where Samantha is? No? I'll give her a couple of minutes to show up.
Thank you.
So, do you have recommendations?
June 1st. We'll start with the first pending legislation. It's a resolution authorizing beer and wine for the Jewish Culture and Food Festival dated Sunday, 12, 2020, from 12 to 8:00 P.M. Any discussion?
I hope everyone will come, called Utica.
Called Utica?
Utica.
I like that, I like that, I like that. All right, we'll close discussion and we'll call for a vote. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Er- Er- Urban? Yeah, that was the Venice part, Little Venice, I forgot the name. It's on 12, I'm sorry, 1, 2, 5, and 1, 2, 7, Grove Place. Of course, we have the attached legislation for the sale. Councilman Urban, are you okay with this legislation for the sale of this property, sir?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move the vote, one piece will be put in committee, and the other piece will call for a public hearing, so let's, two answering. Our next piece of legislation amends the rules of order, ending Schedule C. Most of us went over these rules. There's also A and B is already there, the highlighted one, and the bold is the added one. Open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to see this go into committee. I'd like to talk to, I have a call out to him, President Goleme, I wanna, a couple, some stuff has been brought to my attention, I wanna talk live to him before I vote on it. If it comes out to the floor, I will not vote for this tonight. It's just my opinion.
Okay. This is a, this is not an ordinance, it's a resolution, all it needs is a majority, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Councilman Beatrice, we'll call for a vote. Our next piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Burmaster for handicapped parking locations. Councilman Burmaster, would you like to summarize and give us an update?
I had a hold of Chief Williams, asked him to do an investigation, they came up with this, and I'm okay with that.
You're good with it?
It's down by the senior senate, senior senate on Port Street.
Okay.
Like Sanders.
Any other additional discussions on ordinance number five? Discussion's now closed, we'll call for a vote. Our next piece of legislation is ordinance number six, amending speed limits. This was updated by both the corporate counsel and our attorneys to update the speeding within the city limits. Open it up for discussion. Any questions?
Yes, so I want Officer Stephanie Noonan to speak to this, and I also, I know that this was originally my legislation, and I know Samantha did all the work on this, so I wanna make sure that if he's good with all this, that we are both on this legislation.
Sure, absolutely, you wanna add?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, I know I talked to you a while, you know, last week or something, and we really weren't sure, is this good the way we want?
I expressed to you that I was confused.
Confused, right.
Oh, yeah, I'm usually confused.
Right, so I just wanna make sure we're good with all this now, 'cause this whole thing started, all I wanted was a 15 mile an hour speed limit in front of all the schools.
Right, so, I brought, this is Captain Holt, Jim Holt, he's in charge of patrol, he's also in charge of traffic.
Okay.
He's also much less confused than me, and he did a lot of research on this, and he, I'll let him just explain.
Okay.
But we do support it.
So, there's a couple of things that govern the parameters of school zones. New York state law is one, but that's based off of the manual uniform traffic code for traffic control devices, okay? It gets really technical, but the mainstay is, school zones can't be bigger than 1,320 feet, so they can't be, they can't, they can't be any, they can't be a greater distance than 1,320 feet on a highway that abuts an entrance or an exit to the school. So as long as you're within those parameters, and the reason for those parameters are, 'cause every school's different, obviously, so there's gonna be crosswalks along the way that kids usual, you know, that kids have more of a propensity to use, so they wanna be able to cover all those crosswalks. So as long as any of those crosswalks fall within 1,320 feet, then that's gonna be, whatever, whatever length, it could be 900 feet to cover all those crosswalks, could be 500 feet to cover all those crosswalks, it could be 1,300 feet, but as long as it stays within 1,320 feet, you're good.
And I'll just, I'll just interject, and that's the reason why we use the address for the school, as opposed to typically with legislation, we market with the, you know, from Arthur Street to Hilton Ave or some other, other, so with the school zone, with the research we found, you can use the address for the school, and then you determine the school zone by the posted speed limit, where the sign is posted and where it ends.
And by the amount of feet?
Well, within that feet, you can post the school zone, so that's why you use the address for the school, as opposed to other ways to market.
So again, explain to me, I'm glad we're gonna get this through tonight and get it over with, but explain to me, what is the difference between this legislation and the legislation that councilperson Colosimo had? What was the problem where we didn't know about, why did we have to go through all this?
The problem was actually mainly the streets that are separately listed, there was some issue with those, some streets were left off, so they both, Chief and Captain Holt went out and checked to make sure.
So now we're sure this is right?
Yes.
So you could've just amended the legislation in a hand instead of drafting a whole new piece.
Well, I don't think they really drafted a whole new piece, I just think they did amend it and put different names on it, but, so, okay.
Read between the lines, Joe.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, in other words, Captain, what you're saying is you couldn't, we couldn't sort of as a city say, you know what, for Hughes, we're gonna start that school limit down at Genesee, and we're gonna run it all the way up to Oneida, and we're just gonna say that whole length of Valentine Bray is a school zone, the state is just gonna say, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, it says, I mean, it specifically says the maximum distance is 1,320 feet, so that's a quarter of a mile.
And there has to be an entrance or egress that abuts to that, within that 1,320 feet.
Right, so like Hughes is, opens up onto Valentine Bray.
So you're good with a school zone there, it just can't be greater than 1,320.
But it can't be the whole length of Valentine Bray.
So, and here's the, here's the tricky part, confusing part for me was, the address for Hughes' school, I believe, is Prospect Street, but the school zone's on Valentine Bray.
Right.
But because of the way this is worded, you can have the school zone on Valentine Bray because it's got an entrance and an entrance that abuts to Valentine Bray, and it's within the 1,320 feet.
Right, the old Prospect is no longer an entrance, they in fact kind of.
Correct, right, that's the address, that's the address of the school.
Right, right.
And, and there's posted school zone, I think, there.
Yeah, we did that at 2,000.
On the back.
Yeah, so and that's, so it's gotta be posted at the, you know, each end of Valentine, you know, each end of whatever the footage is, you know, that, with, of those crosswalks that they're trying to encompass.
Right.
And as long as it's posted, you can write the ticket within that zone.
Okay.
That's for, that's for school zones, so if they're, so that's not to say you can't determine after a traffic study that it needs to be lesser in an area that children have for some other. Correct.
Okay, can I ask?
And there's parameters for that, too, as far as what the, you know, I think the minimum amount of, the minimum miles per hour is 15 miles per hour. There's also, you know, you can go greater than that, but there's parameters for how to determine that.
You can't arbitrarily decide.
No, there's parameters for it, it's gotta be 85 percent of whatever the average speed is of the area, and there's gotta be surveys and.
Okay. I would, so this may be, what you just said might be relevant to my question, which is that I would like Master Garden Road and Steel Hill Road to be included on those, those are all marked at 15, this is the two roads that run through Roscoe Concling, they're not listed, stepping on that list of separate streets.
So as I indicate, as I spoke with the chief about this, if there are streets that are not marked, I only used what was in the, the old Schedule N of speed limits, so if there are other, other streets that have a different speed limit that is not 30 miles per hour.
But posted.
But posted, it can be amended, but after speaking with the chief, it is the posted speed limit that they will issue tickets for.
Right.
So.
But as long as we're listing any, I'd like to go ahead, if anybody, if nobody has an objection, I'd like to amend it tonight and put Master Garden Road on the list and Steel Hill Road on the list, anybody object to that?
So that would be section 50 mile an hour or 20?
Those would be 15.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have, wouldn't be able to be a school zone, but it would be.
That's nothing to do, it's the.
No, I know, but.
That's why you should've left it separate with the exceptions of 15 mile per hour, 20 mile per hour, 25, I mean, none of you would know.
It is, it's on section B.
It's section, if all the roads are listed on section B in alphabetical order, so I'm just gonna suggest that we, that we slip, Master Hill, Garden Road there will become L, M, M, will become M, and then Oneida, and the rest get bumped down, and then Steel Hill Road will go in above Tamara.
Okay, so.
Can I ask what, just put it down, I just got a phone call.
I just, I think we would prefer if, 'cause I think this could open the door to a lot of people making a lot of requests for a lot of streets to be changed for.
It's always as close.
I think we need, I think we would prefer you request it, we do the study, and then, and we make sure that there's nothing that we're missing before we make the change tonight.
Okay, okay, that's fine, so we'll leave this legislation tonight as is, that's fine.
And we can only just add to it later on.
Right, so then, can I go ahead and now ask you to do a quick study of Master Garden and Steel Hill?
It's, there's, there is different parameters for what the, what the speed limit should be on municipal roadways, on highways, there's all sorts of different exceptions, some we're gonna have to take a look at when we do that.
Yeah, for that reason, that's why I just prefer not to do it quick tonight.
Okay, so that's fine, so I'd like to ask for the, I mean, I, it'll be interesting to see what parameters you find about, sort of for a road that runs through a park.
I gotta tell you, it's not, it's, it's not, it's not easy when you, this, I'd like to give you that manual for traffic control device, it's pretty interesting, I don't know who wrote it, but it's.
I, I'm just paid part-time and you're paid full-time, Captain, so I'm gonna let you figure out how Master Garden Road figures into the master plan, thank you.
It's very academic, that's for sure.
Are we all set with the discussion?
No, I'm not, I actually have a bar, if that's okay with you.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Stephanie, can you just tell me which ones weren't in the exceptions that you had on that compared to which ones you added to that? I just wanna see the change, because it wasn't in, it wasn't in the original legislation, so I'm just curious to know.
Do you have, do you have the email that you sent to me?
I have to pull.
Would you speak more directly into, might follow through with mine?
Yes, Judge, absolutely, thank you.
There were a number of.
I didn't catch it, just said it.
There were a number of streets that didn't have any speed limit designated, so when Captain Holt went out, he went and verified, and some of them were 30, some of them were 25, those are the streets that got put back in.
Right, so which ones were they compared to the old legislation, 'cause if we're not legislated for those in the original one, we should be, 'cause that's the same thing you're saying that the US can't do, so what?
But that's what I did.
Yeah, I know, but which ones? 'Cause what wasn't on the original schedule? That's what I'm asking you. Yes, it does. Well, because I wanna know what difference in the legislation was, so yeah, if there's no difference in the original legislation, I wanna know what the difference was. No, 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 it's not that, I wanna, I wanna prove a point here. They're contemplating, but, hold on a minute, Bobby.
I gotta look it up, I didn't bring my.
It's tough to find an email under pressure.
No, I, 'cause.
I mean.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr., yes, yes, Judge.
I just wanted to mention to the members that Mr. Giorgio and I spent a great deal of time talking about this the other day, and the primary concern in my mind, and I told her, is that because of the extent of this type of legislation, and because it has to go to judicial review, should there be a violation, I wanted as much input from the Utica Police Department as possible. It's not just like saying, you know, you want to change the speed limit on one street or something, and, and I'm, I'm very happy and that the officer, the captain came here tonight, and, and we have input from the police department, 'cause this was an extensive ordinance. It's a little bit different than the one before, but the whole purpose of this ordinance was to try to get it as right as we can, it will never be perfect. We have hundreds of miles of streets in the city, and I commend Mr. Giorgio and all the work she did on this, and she made sure that the representative of the police department was here tonight, and I thanked the captain for coming, and I think that there'll be questions, and I fully anticipated you might put this in committee, and if you did, then any proposed changes would be done, or in the alternative, you might pass it, and that's fine. It wasn't designed to change the thoughts of any other councilmen, it was just merely to put it in one complete context, that I could sit here and say, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with that, and I, as I said to Councilman Miola earlier tonight, when he was questioning the zone distances and description, and we talked about that, I said, I look at from, from a judicial standpoint, if I were on the bench at Utica City Court and I see a violation, I first look to see is it properly posted? Did you know the sign, the sign said 15 miles an hour? And things of that nature, and so the technicalities are what they are, but if there is, if there's actual notice and you've passed the speed limit in school zones, then, and you're, where you got stopped was a school zone, it's pretty much covered by the general's nature of the statute. So would I find you guilty if in fact the facts were there? Yes, I would, and that's the kind of discussion we had today. You can make anything as complicated as you want and, and as extensive as you want, but I think the simpler the legislation you are, you're considering and passing of is the one that becomes the most successful beyond this body, and also for the mayor when he sees it, and whether he's gonna prove it or not. And so that, I wanted to say that because I would be remiss if I didn't, once again, which I've done many times, say that Mr. Giorgio and I get along fabulously, she works very hard, and she makes sure that her and I are always on the same page, and she assured me tonight that a member of the police department would be here and would explain some of these things that we had questions about, that Councilman Miola asked me about this afternoon, he was kind of upset about some things, and, but this ordinance, not the other, this ordinance. So I wanted you to know that, and I wanna know that some thought went, that I wanted this councilperson tested to know, that, that we weren't trying to bypass her, quite frankly, she brought up the whole question to begin, and we were just refining it to a point where we thought that as lawyers, we could approve it, and I wanted to make that clear tonight, and I did wanna thank the captain for coming here, of course, Chief Noonan always comes here, and he just adds one level of authority, and it's just like having the chief of police himself here when you have Chief Noonan here, 'cause he is in the same, in my opinion, the same level of command.
Thank you, Your Honor.
That's all I have to say, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Joe?
Yeah, Judge, thank you very much for your hard work on this, I don't think anybody, I think the nine councilpeople here all wanna see this, pass it and move it forward, we're all happy with it, once the police, I can't, I shouldn't speak for everybody, I know myself, we are happy with it once we get the blessing from the police. I think councilperson Colosimo is only asking, what's the difference in the two, and that's all, that's, I, just I wanted to know, too. So that's, that's it, it's great that it's fixed, I'm glad we're moving forward, we got a lot more important things to worry about than this, but I just wanted to know what the difference was in the two for my own self, that's why I asked the question.
So as far as the difference, there, like I said, there were a number of streets that didn't have a speed limit designated to them in the initial ordinance, not the one that Sam initially presented, in the original Schedule N. When Captain Holt went out to look, he found those, those are the ones that got added back in, that I added in, there was a number of other language changes that I made, and just as a procedural point, it's easier for me. it's easier for me to work with a piece of legislation that I'm drafting instead of trying to amend, and it's a lot harder for you to follow what I've amended based on something that's being amended and rescinded, so it's just easier for me and probably for you to see, to start fresh and see the changes in comparison. So I can read off the list, I have a notation in my office, I can grab it when we're done, to see all the lists, all the streets that I added back in and put a correct street number based on the, the actual signage that was up for those streets in the initial legislation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Samantha, you got any more questions?
No, yeah, I would just like to see that list, because I've been looking and I haven't been able to find it.
Okay, because, of course, Stephanie will keep that available after the meeting. This is an ordinance, any descending votes? Okay, we'll move it tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bobby, go ahead.
On, on New Street where Donovan is, you're not changing it then from what it was before, because I didn't see anything listed.
Some places, like I said, we're not changing, I'm just, it's, it's just being regulated, so they're not changing the signs, they're not moving the signs, it's just how it's going to be read in the actual statute to say, the speed limit is fifteen miles per hour in the vicinity of that school, and wherever the signage is posted is the appropriate school zone.
Which helps them enforce it.
Okay, so like Kernin School goes from Court Street to Warren Street according to this, but I see they got a sign up on Cross Street where the school zone ends. Are they going to take that down and put it on Court Street?
Have to take a look at it.
Would you guys mind taking a look at that area and help Councilman Burmaster?
If you headed towards Yorkville going up Court Street, after you go by the funeral parlor in the light, up on Cross Street, there's a sign that says, end of school zone, which is, you know, further up the road than just Court Street.
I wonder if it's signed.
On the other side of Court Street?
It's, it's, it's on Court Street, but it's on the corner across, port, across from the state hospital.
Heading west.
Heading west toward York.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we can certainly take a look.
No, I just, I, I just want to make sure we clarify it, so, you know, if, if it's going to remain there, that means that that still stays fifteen miles an hour.
And they're not, they're not removing any signs. The signs are going to stay, so unless there's a, an issue with traffic subsequently, they'll be addressed. But right now, all the signs at the schools and the current signage for all these other streets are staying put, not moving.
Great.
Thank you.
Councilor Beatrice, how's that?
Yes, Beatrice.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilman Burmaster, I didn't expect that. Judge, you mentioned you have the floor.
Interestingly enough, I was at Kernin School today, it's not a school, it's the pedestrian headquarters of the school board, and I'm sure that there are signs that are not pertinent anymore, like Conca, not, where Councilwoman Testa teaches, that for years was administrative building, now it's a school. So I am not so sure that in a city this size, every single sign is following the statute that really enacted it or even exists anymore. So there is going to have to be, at some point, probably Captain Holt knows that too, that they're going to probably have to survey a little area where things are not pertinent. And we leave it, that's, that's why we leave it to the police department to do these things. They, they do it very well, and it's interesting you bring that up, because I was there today, and it signs up pertinent. It's, it's nothing more than an administrative building. Thank you. That's all, Mr.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there any other discussions on this legislation? Okay, discussion's closed on the legislation, we'll move the vote. Our next piece of legislation is ordinance number seven, which also is ordinance amending the speed limit. Would, Stephanie, would you like to just give us a quick update on this?
So initially, that was proposed to be, I believe, rescinded. That is needed, and the only amendment I made to that is added posted speed limits, so if there is a posted speed limit sign, the police have the ability to enforce.
On the legislation, so anything posted out there is enforceable?
Okay.
So, so we don't have to specifically legislate each sign. Thank you, thank you for doing that. Is there any questions on this legislation, any discussion? Discussion's closed on ordinance number seven, we'll call for a vote. I believe eight and nine is unanimous. Is there any questions on our choices for the civilian public safety board? Okay, eight and nine are closed. I think that's it for tonight in our legislation. I'm sorry.
There's, there's two, there's one other thing that we have to pull out, out of committee, and that's actually rescinding section three sixty-nine. So it's proposed, proposed ordinance number ten, that has to follow with.
That's, that goes into the meeting with.
No, I know, but I didn't get to say it, so I wanted to just explain to everybody that that has to come out in order to follow with the two pieces that were proposed.
So we're removing, what about eight, eight, nine and ten?
Nope.
Nope.
Just ten.
Section three sixty-nine.
So is this number thirteen?
Nope. Ten.
So we'll be removing, we'll be, we'll be, actually, if it's not sponsored by any council members, we'll just pull it from the table, so. Any other questions?
So we're taking number ten, and we need to pass that one, you're saying?
Yes, because, and she, she, she eliminated out of that, out of the piece of legislation for that, so it has to be rescinded in order to be deleted out of the section.
We need to pass the rescinded?
Yes.
Right, okay. And then, can the others be discharged today, as far as you're concerned?
Um, the only one that I.
Nine and thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, those could be, those could be discharged.
Okay, was discharged. All, all you got to do is discharge, make a motion to discharge and.
So with number ten, we're going to go ahead and pass, pass the rescinded?
All right, any other discussions in the meeting? Okay, meeting's closed, guys, we got a half and a half to read. Oh, we got one more? Go ahead, Frank.
You know, this has been a topic there for a while, as far as the ordinance amending the composition for the Bureau of Fire. So what I'd like to do is bring it out on the floor. I just want to make sure I have the right one here. And I don't know if we want to have a discussion on it now. We do have the chief here, we could talk a little bit about it, or we're going to do any amendments, whatever, whatever we want to do with this proposed ordinance number seven that was in committee, so.
So you want to discuss it now? Okay.
I'd like to discuss it a little bit.
We have time. Is, if this, if the council doesn't mind, it was in committee at the hall, but we could discuss it now. Any opposed? Okay.
We're looking at, ordinance number seven dated five eighteen twenty-two.
Five eleven twenty-two it says on there. The one I have.
Underneath of it is the date, five eighteen, five eighteen, date of legislation, go ahead.
Councilor DeBrango, you would like to open the discussions on?
Yeah, I know, I know, Chief, last meeting that we had, we, I guess we peppered you with a bunch of questions regarding, you know, the manpower with the fire department and what councilman, councilmember Colosimo Testa proposed, and I agreed with, and we just wanted, I wanted to open the floor a little bit if we can, and if any council members have any questions, and the one question I have is the obvious question, everybody saw the article in the paper, and, you know, is there a need for extra manpower with the Uta Fire Department is my main, my main question to ask you, is there a need for extra personnel?
Yeah, if you, if the council's going to give me extra personnel, I would never say no. I would absolutely say that.
So if the council decides to increase the complement, obviously you're not going to deny it. I don't think any department head would.
But what, what, what department would say, no, we don't need more?
Right. Okay.
Could you say the last part louder?
What department head would say that they don't need?
Frank, you still got the floor.
Yeah, that was my main question, and I just want to open the floor to the council members, and, and, you know, this is a very important piece of legislation, and obviously, you know where I stand on it, so.
Hold on for a minute.
Go ahead, I'm done.
You all set?
Celeste, you're next.
No, I really just wanted to hear the chief repeat that, but I, I do feel like that doesn't quite answer the question as posed. Yes, you would take twenty more people if we would give it to you. Who, who wouldn't? You're absolutely right. But what do you need? Those are, those do strike me as different questions. What would you take versus what would you need, what do you need?
What I, what I need right now is four lieutenants, and how you, as the council, decide to control the table organization. So I don't control the table of organization, obviously, that's strictly an approval of the council. I need four lieutenants. That's, that's truly what I need at this point.
Okay. Wait, 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 Joey, wait. Mark, you're, you're next on the floor.
So my question is.
Could you talk into Mike? My question is, since the police are here, with the hospital coming downtown here, it's going to open next year, I guess, two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you guys, has both public safety departments done some type of analysis if we're going to need more manpower when that hospital opens up downtown? You know, with all the extra activities going to be going down downtown, you're going to be doing more ambulance service, and I, I don't know. Have you guys done analysis on this with this new hospital going downtown, where are you going to need downrange?
So, so currently, obviously, we respond to both, both hospitals right now. So we provide fire coverage for St. Luke's campus. We respond to anything at the building itself. We don't respond to issues in the parking lot, but we, we have responded to St. Luke's since they, I believe, since they opened up in the mid-fifties when they moved from Woodsboro Street. The impetus behind that was that we were a staffed fire department, I believe. We can't really find any, what the official agreement was made back in the fifties, but we have responded to that for years. Obviously, we already respond to St. Elizabeth on a regular basis, again, for our protection, and we transport to both hospitals. There's going to be a definite increase in the amount of traffic that we're going to see downtown, I, I put it's more under the police issue. You know, we're involved in every step of the way with any fire questions in the new hospital. We've been doing walkthroughs every couple of weeks. The building there, the site there itself has been very receptive to our, adjusting to our requests and needs, so that's been, that's, that's certainly positive. You know, it's a well-protected building, we're going to see maybe a slight uptick in calls, especially in the downtown area with the accidents and other responses such as that, but our, our medical calls, we've really reached saturation, and saturation being that we're probably doing as many medical transports as we can right now, the ambulance, ambulance-wise. The ambulance is, are extremely busy, and I don't know how much busier they're going to get with that hospital being downtown.
Councilor Williams, any other questions? Council, Councilor Beatrice?
He's got, he's, he's got to say so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to respond, he, he mentioned police too, I just, so we have eight zones. On an annual basis, we evaluate the zones for, for number of calls per zone. We try and balance them out, we average about, I believe it's about six thousand calls per zone as they stand. Obviously, with the change in the hospital going from south Uta to downtown, that, that call volume will change and we'll adjust the zones accordingly. With regards to manpower, we have been in early talks with the hospital, we've been meeting with them on a regular basis as well. Right now, they, they're contracting for police services at St. Elizabeth's in the ER. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but they've expressed an interest in continuing that contracted service and possibly even doing more with regards to police coverage at the hospital when it moves downtown.
Councilor Williams, anything else?
So you would probably see, you would probably need more manpower as that comes?
They, they anticipate that, and as do we, we've been in talks with, you know, some type of cost, possibly some cost sharing agreement to cover that increasing and need for police.
One other question, this should, this is followed on, I mean, so as we increase in population, we have to have a certain amount of firemen as well as a certain amount of police officers if, as we increase, see we have sixty-four thousand now, we went to seventy thousand by two thousand twenty-six. Does that call for an increase of more manpower?
For us, it wouldn't be based on population, it would be based on numbers of calls for service. So, I mean, you could have an equivalent city of sixty thousand people that doesn't see the number of calls for service, like we see fifty thousand, I think it's fifty thousand hours, fifty thousand calls per year, and you could have a city that has sixty-five thousand people that has ten thousand calls per year. It's all, it's all based on calls for service.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Williams.
No, he answered my question, I don't know if she's made.
Yeah, sure, I just, I just get a couple of questions. This is for the chief, and I know, we keep asking the question, do you want it added? Do you want to see this legislation amended, or do you want it to pass in its form? Because this is going to be the debate that's coming up. Do you want to add four lieutenants without losing firefighters?
Of course, I don't want to lose firefighters.
Yes or no? Do you want to see this legislation amended in its form? Yes or no?
I want you guys to make that decision.
And the problem that came up is that they're saying that council people are, are going a little harder for this legislation than the chief, and I've had this conversation with you. So obviously, you know my, my opinion on what the legislation is, or had I would have not put it forward, and he wouldn't have sponsored it. So I need you to be an advocate for me, okay? In your department, because this doesn't directly affect me, okay? It, it directly affects me as a resident of the city to know that your staffing's not at the level that it's needed. But I don't feel comfortable taking away positions in order to add them, because to me, that defeats the purpose. So, I mean, that, that is something that I need you to answer, to clarify for the rest of these, the rest of, the rest of the body on this, in this council chamber.
Okay, so for three years, or three, three-plus years that I've been either the acting chief or the fire chief, I've pretty, been pretty consistent with the message that every day we go to work, we're starting short, we're short-staffed. So I have four platoons, each platoon is supposed to have twenty-eight personnel assigned. So my first platoon has twenty-five out of twenty-eight positions assigned right now. My second platoon has twenty-six out of twenty-eight positions assigned. Third platoon is at full staff at twenty-eight positions that are full. The fourth platoon has twenty-four out of twenty-eight positions. So three out of the four shifts are starting below optimal staffing every day, no matter what. There's not a lot we can do to control that. We've had three retirements this year, so three of those openings are due to retirement, the other six are due to long-term two oh seven injuries. Several of the injuries have reached maximum medical improvement, we've talked about that. Several have been, I have one from two thousand twelve, I have one from two thousand fourteen, one from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen. That will not be. So, yes, each shift, or three out of the four shifts are starting short-staffed, which causes an uptick in whether it's replacement time or the use of auto title, because two out of the six long-term two oh seven injuries are lieutenants, so it's, it becomes difficult to fill those positions.
So the next question that I have, do you want to see the complement go from one twenty-four to one twenty-eight? Yes or no?
If we can do it in a way that makes financial sense, then I, I'm all in favor of more personnel.
So yes, you would?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All set? What you mean by financial sense, is it possible to utilize a safer grant first for the employment of the additional firefighters and not use local tax dollars?
That was the impetus behind putting in.
So you would favor that, that method first? Wait until July, find out where we go with the safer method to add additional positions, but right now, your minimum qualifications would be to add those lieutenants, is that correct?
I need those four lieutenants.
Very good, very good. Councilor DeBrango, you got the floor?
I don't believe there's a much financial, financial difference if we maintain four firefighters, you know, add four firefighters. And the reason being is, you're filling those positions every day, and I want to say a callback, that's a person that is on a list that is a senior firefighter with the highest pay to work the twenty-four-hour shift that the person that was on two oh seven eight can't work. So we're paying twice for that shift anyway. So if you hire a young firefighter, low forties, mid-forties, whatever it may be, versus a seventy thousand dollar firefighter filling that slot every day, financially, I don't think it's going to be a burden on the city. I, I would rather have younger firefighters there, not that, not against the old buffaloes, as we call them, but I would like to see the chief of the department get fully staffed, get twenty-eight each member, twenty-eight members a day. We only, we only, the minimum manning is, is twenty-four people, twenty-three people a day, twenty-three people a day. So that's something that, it's still very, very low for a city this size, but he's willing to work with that. So I, I do feel he'll have a better option. So I, I, I do feel he'll have a better option adding four firefighters to the, to the positions. Uh, that, that, that's my opinion on it. I don't think financially it's gonna be pretty much of a burden. We're already paying to fill that slot every single day that these, uh, two oh seven A people are out. So that, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Council DeBrengo. Council Beatrice?
Yes. Chief, did, um, I just wanna reiterate, at our last meeting, didn't you talk that we are so difficult to hire anybody right now? That you couldn't hire anybody, even if we passed these four, you couldn't hire anybody until October. Is that correct, did you say? October or November?
Right now, the fire academy is planned to start September twelfth.
Okay.
Um, we have committed to other departments as well to start on September twelfth. But until we get this civil service test back, the civil service test was administered March seventeenth. They're taken somewhere in the neighborhood of three months to be returned. It has to be, uh, validated, it has to be finalized. Um, we have to get the, uh, physical ability test. We do have to give medical examinations and, uh, do background checks as well.
Right, so, so basically, if we were to pass this and we're gonna hire four people, you couldn't really hire them until September or October anyways?
There is going to be a delay and-
Okay, so now, my next question is, the safer grant, okay, they're supposed to tell us about that in July, correct? That's, that's around, and you don't really know that?
From what I understand, uh, they could start awarding in July.
Okay, but they're not gonna award before July, so we're-
I don't really, I, I can't even-
And this is, this is, I, I'd like to know your feeling on this, okay? And, and on a different topic. To me, the safer grant is great, 'cause it helps for three years and help the taxpayers don't pay. But at the end of three years, your complement, you're gonna, those people are gonna retire. Your, your amount is gonna be the same amount of firefighters, that you're still gonna be shorthanded. So, and I know early in January, when councilperson Colosimo came out with, wanted to hire all these firefighters, I, I was, I know you need to help, but I was never in favor to hire twelve. My view was to hire four. I need four, next year, four, so the city can go. Don't you believe that would be the better way to go than go and, I mean, you're, you're gonna get, let's make believe we don't do this and the safer grant is passed. You get eight firefighters. In three years, you're where you are right now. You're, you're nowhere ahead of the game.
Keep in mind, we get eight firefighters, but we're only natty two, because we have six out, so-
Okay, so that, that's all the more reason that if we can get you four, you need to get the four now. It's my opinion. Thank you.
Council Beatrice, thank you. Council's last friend, you have the floor.
So from my understanding, the safer grant is in part based upon, it's like cities in distress, cities in need. I think if we pass this tonight, if I were the, whatever body oversees the safer grant, I would take the Utica application right on out of the pile. I really would. Uh, because we would have demonstrated that in fact, we aren't a city in distress in, in need of federal assistance in order to hire firefighters. So I can't see, I mean, also, given what Councilman Beatrice just spelled out about the October delay-
September.
September, so the September delay, um, it, it still seems to me, we're risking the safer grant in order to achieve not being able to hire people until September anyway. What the safer grant, we're gonna find out in July, and then I think we take it from there. It just doesn't make any sense to me that we would go to all the trouble that we did to apply for that safer grant. Now that, and then, and then go ahead and authorize four more positions anyway. I think that's a separate question from whether we should give you the four more lieutenants without changing the complement. Because from my understanding, that's more or less a wash. Given that you're having to pay people in title anyway, you might as well make them lieutenants so that we're paying them for the, the rank that they actually have, rather than paying them in title on that day when they come in. And, and it also seems to me, you've been very clear, you need the lieutenants right now. Right? So I, I'm in favor of, I would be in favor of the legislation we saw a couple of meetings ago, where we promote four firefighters, two lieutenant, keeping the complement steady. Um, and then we wait until the safer grant comes in and we take it from there. That's my position.
Thank you, Councilman's last friend. Council Malala, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, looking at this, obviously, to, at some point, we are increasing the staffing. But when I went on the tours with you guys, you showed me all the stations that need a lot of repairs. I know Whitesboro Street's getting a hundred fifteen thousand, is that right, Heather? And two eighty-five for Shepherd? So, but you had a lot of visions and what also needed to be done at other places. So when I look at this, I'm just curious, what should be prioritized in the budget? Is it just staffing now, all in? Or should we also be allocating some and thinking ahead five, ten years of how we're gonna fix those buildings too?
Yeah, so I kind of prehensive five, ten-year plan, which we've talked about with the mayor. I submitted several five-year and ten-year, uh, gamble, uh, proof of plans, but it costs a ton of money. Um, you know, are, are the needs of the city have changed? Uh, they're evolving, we're in a growth momentum, so, uh, all the firehouses that we have may not be in the best places to provide service. Uh, some of them are really leaping out of, uh, uh, you know, that's one of the unique issues that we have, is that we have seven facilities that we have to take care of. Those needs don't change, but also, um, the fact that our call volumes increased twenty-five percent in the last decade has really driven a lot of the decisions that we're making at this point too. So it's, it's really trying to find that perfect balance between staffing issues, which is critical to the safety of firefighters and to the general public-
Yeah, sorry.
And to, uh, making, uh, need changes to the buildings as well.
Thank you. And that's kinda where I know anybody would take twenty people if they could, but it sounds like we could also do as many as we can. Uh, but Heather, if you had a, I had a question with, how much would it be for four firefighters then, out of pocket?
No, I didn't bring that with me today, but I did quite a, quite an analysis about two months ago. And I, I want to say, 'cause it's not, they don't start at forty, they start at forty-nine. Um, and then the benefit package, you probably add twenty-five to thirty-five thousand to that. So you're probably sponsoring between eighty and ninety thousand when they start.
Okay. And all set?
All set? Thank you, Katie. Um, Samantha, you have the floor? Yeah, sure. Just a couple of things. So we've already budgeted for those four firefighters, for firefighter positions this year. So if we take that away, that's extra money in that, in that budget line.
I don't know what you're talking about.
For the, for the proposed amount-
Four additional to the complement?
No, four additional lieutenants to the complement. What I'm saying is that if they subtract from those firefighters, to keep the complement the same, we've already budgeted for those four firefighters.
As, as the chief mentioned, it's, it's, it's pretty much a wash, going through the numbers, okay? With the replacement that comes into play, so yes.
Okay, so I just, I just wanna clarify that. So I got, I got a couple of, couple of things that I wanna bring up. One is, we talk about priorities and what we're, what we're spending money on, right? A million-dollar skate park, two-hundred-thousand-dollar to each council people. The main service that we offer as a city is public safety. Police, fire, DPW, okay? So to me, that, that waste on a skate park, that waste on this, when we're having a discussion about firehouses not being completed? We have discussions about police being, you know, so on and so forth? I mean, that, to me, that's, that's where our priority should be, but, I mean, that, those are allocations of those fundings.
You neglect to mention, when you bring up the skate park-
Sure.
The million dollars for a new fire truck.
Yep.
The several, I, I, I don't remember, I think it's seven fifty for refurbishments of fire trucks. The all-new exhaust systems.
Yep.
The numbers just came in on the, the borrowing that you did for Central and I believe for the roof at Whitesboro.
Yep.
Okay? Came in six hundred grand more, and we're trying to find all the money. So to say it's all about skate parks-
No, I'm just using it as, I'm using it as example. So obviously, maybe we shouldn't be putting it towards a skate park and putting it towards the more needs that we actually need, is my point. Maybe that's not a priority in the city right now.
But it's finding the need though. I haven't heard the definition of the need.
Of what's, what's the need? I think that we're arguing about spending money on adding additional lieutenants.
You're telling us there's need, obviously, what is the need?
I agree, and I'm telling you, we're, we're spending a million dollars on a skate park, and we're telling you that we need four additional lieutenants while keeping the same coverage as firefighters, and we're not spending that money towards that. But that's, but that's the argument. We've got, we've got no money, but we just had sixty-four million dollars to blow away and everything else, which I appreciate-
Including the fire park.
And, and the police department. We, we added five additional, five additional police. I have no problem doing that, but obviously, there might be a need for more of each, which that's, that's, that's a totally separate issue, but I had, I just had to bring that up, okay? With that said, now they told you that there might not, I think Councilman DeBrengo explained it pretty clearly, as far as the need for additional, additional manpower with the funding. Now that we know that that's cleared, are you still, are you comfortable going from one twenty-four to one twenty-eight? Knowing that that was clarified in his, in his statement? I mean, th, this is, this is the argument here. Are we going, are we staying at one twenty-four, or are we going to one twenty-eight?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
It's our decision, right? It's, it's, truly, at the end of the day, if you give me personnel, I will put them to work.
Scott, I wanna give you twelve. I mean, obviously, it's our decision, otherwise you would've hit twelve in January, okay? So, I mean, I, I'll give you fifteen. I'll give the fire, uh, police department fifteen. You know what I mean? I'm not, I'm not here to sit there and say, obviously, you know, white position. I'm trying to convince the other, the other brains in the room what is actually needed, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's really what- Samantha, we're running close on time. I'd like to get the other colleagues in, are you all set?
Sure, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Frank, Councilman DeBrengo?
Yeah, there's a couple of points I wanna make. I know, uh, councilperson friend, it was worried about, you know, the safer grant and maybe not getting it and shuffling away, because, you know, we could afford four more firefighter, firefighters. I, I don't think that's the, that's the case. I talked to a person, IAF member, and, uh, this grant has been already reviewed. It's been, it's already placed. Uh, I don't foresee any issues if we hire eight, ten, twelve, whatever it may be, it's not gonna affect the grant. Um, so I don't, I don't believe that by us adding four firefighters is going to affect the grant. Um, that's what I was told by a, a member that is involved in the grant processing. So, um, being that, that being said, I don't think we have to worry about it. And then if the eight come in, i- if we get granted eight, you know, then we can make a decision whether we wanna go with the full eight, go with four, whatever we, whatever that, whatever we get granted. I, I don't think we're gonna be granted eight ready, and it's, it's a done deal. They could only give us four and give another department, cut another department. If they're asking for eight, maybe we won't get four. So that, that's one point. The other, the other point is, if we get the eight and if we have the four, there's, there's, I know there's firefighters out there that are waiting for this contract. And they're gonna, they're gonna retire after the, after we settle this contract. It's been, it's been, you know, a couple of years now, and I know they're waiting, they're waiting to get out, hopefully, you know, get the thing settled. So we're gonna be losing more manpower, you know? And then it's gonna take another six to eight months to fill more slots. So I just want you to take that in consideration, because if the contract gets settled, hopefully, within the next few months or so, because they are meeting with a mediator, there may be some, uh, firefighters retiring, and now we're gonna have more openings, since it's gonna be more stressful to fill slots every single day. So that's, that's the point I wanna make. Thank you.
All set? Thank you, Councilman DeBrengo. Council Williams, you're the last one, you have the floor.
Yeah, so to echo what Councilman DeBrengo said, um, we're an A-rated firehouse or a fire station or didn't-
A-one rating.
A-one rating. So as long as we keep that stash, we're at a higher level than most fire departments throughout the state, correct?
Yeah.
And you're, and we average about, what, five to six to seven, eight, ten two oh seven As constantly on a yearly basis? So even if we moved your complement up to, say, one forty, you don't have to fill them. I mean, 'cause now you get, you get to juggle, you know what your needs are, just like Councilman DeBrengo said, that when people retire, now you gotta, you got another hole, you gotta train another relief.
Yes.
So even if we put, you know, we made a complement one forty, you don't have to hire up to a hundred forty. You might have to adjust accordingly as you see downrange, people getting ready to retire, they've dropped their papers, nine months down the road, now, okay, now you need to hire. Or what happens if you got ten people on two oh seven A? Then what happens? See, it's, 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 how do you, you can't really manage people like that, because you're, you're getting held to a, into one little area, like, if you had like a hundred forty firemen, and you only had a hu, you had a hundred twenty-seven working, you don't need those other thirteen. But you, you have them on deck just in case we have more two oh seven As, we have people retiring. I'm not even sure how old your staff is now. I mean, are half of them, I mean, what's the percentage of people fifteen-year-plus?
Uh, we'll be heading, right, right now, today, we have twenty-six, they have twenty-year, uh, that are twenty-plus years. Uh, we'll have another eleven next year, we'll have another eight, um, the following year, so I would say-
I mean, because what happens if-
About two-thirds of our staff will be coming up on retirement, uh, you know, 'cause there's a twenty-year retirement.
Yeah, but say, you know, and that's what I'm saying, we gave you a hundred and forty firemen, I mean, you're not gonna fill them off. It's gonna be up to the administration to fill them with their budgetary money and everything else, yes. But knowing you have that access to extra manpower, just like the chief of police and everything else, knowing that they have those people on hand that, hey, I got all these people on two, I got all these people retiring, right? I know they're retiring, I need to set up another fire academy, and I need to hire another fifteen police officers or firemen. So, I mean, how do, I mean, we should actually give you more people, even though you don't have to fill them, because it still has to be approved for budgetary process. But, I mean, how do you plan downrange when you have half, you got twenty-five people getting ready to retire, just like Councilman DeBrengo said? They might all pull chucks, what then, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, succession planning is, uh, is difficult at most sometimes, so.
Do you got a response from, uh, that?
Well, I mean, in, in some municipalities, the council allows the, their departments to hire in, in anticipation, above the complement, in anticipation of vacancies.
In anticipation of?
Of vacancies, of time. Now, I mean, the question, now the counter to that is, some people may indicate they're gonna retire, but they don't.
Yeah, they're kind of handling it.
Right, right, but that's, that's something we've discussed.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it kinda puts you guys, your hands are tied, but if you, if you have three firemen that go down in injuries, now, now we're down to what? You see what I mean? So, I mean, there's no basis, there's no safety net for you guys, 'cause we're, we're putting, you have one twenty-four right now, and if you give you four, it's one twenty-eight. What's that really gonna do if you lose three firemen tomorrow?
Correct.
It's worth going one eighteen, not one seventeen.
One thirteen really is the same, one of the, uh, our-
So, you know, to echo what Sam and everybody else said, I mean, yeah, you got public safety issues going on. I mean, we're kinda tying your hands for both of you, both sections. You should have more mobility to hire more people as necessary, but you had to have approval by the administration, a budget directive, hey, we can afford three more, and then let the mayor just tell the people, hey, we can't afford it, I gotta increase your taxes. Okay? Well, not us, we give, we give you all the full authority, that's like you said, you guys have authority to, to hire more if necessary, 'cause we're only here for a couple of years at a shot. You're here for a career. You know what's going on downrange.
All right, Council Williams, are you all set? All right. Uh, Councilman, please wrap it up, and we're all set with this discussion.
A budget question then. So if we put these four on, and I know we can't hire until October, whatever, uh, what does that mean for the budget today? Do you have to allocate the funding and keep it ready? Or would do, does that mean we don't think about it and spend a dime until the fall? Like, how does that actually affect taxpayers? 'Cause I don't see why we don't, why we don't just wait until we know for sure with everything.
And, and that's a tough question, because numbers are changing all the time. We have to look at the budget as a whole. So if you were to, whatever you were, if you, if you choose to add those people, there, there are other holes in the budget that they need to fill, or may not. I, I mean, it depends when we do it during the year. There is no money, if you look at the fire cost centers, there is no extra money to pay. Does that mean there isn't extra money somewhere else to pay for them? Um, we're running a pretty lean budget this year. I will tell you that. Yeah, we are. We, and why is that? That's why we didn't have a tax increase, right? Chose not to have a tax increase. Um, we're living off our growth, right? At some point, the, the growth comes to, to an end. We can't live off our growth anymore. So it, it's a, it's a tough question.
All set, Councilman Malala? Uh, Councilman Celeste Friend, this is off-topic, go right ahead.
I, I wanted to discuss something else, um, since we have, um, Captain Holt and Deputy Chief Noon in here. Could you just briefly, and I know that we're running short on time, this, this, um, this massacre, I don't know what you wanna call it, in Texas is so disturbing, not just, obviously, for yet, yet another bunch of dead children, but, um, also because of the reports that came out that children inside the school were asking for the police to come in and the police didn't. So could you just discuss what sort of policies, practices, protocols we have in place in terms of how we handle these kinds of situations? I don't know, it's just got, it's just very disturbing, the, the reports coming out of Texas. I'm sure that we are prepared to do better, but if you could briefly discuss that, I would very much appreciate it.
So Jim, in addition to being a traffic expert, is also in charge of our active shooter training, which we do annually.
Got a lot of hits on him.
You need manpower, right? You can get fifty-three more jobs.
So he's, he's in charge of our active shooter training, which we do annually. He's also in charge of our SWAT team. Um, and he also, um, we frequently get requests from, um, the school district, but also other entities such as banks, churches, et cetera, to do active shooter training at those, uh, buildings or facilities. And Jim oversees those. So I'll just let him speak a little bit on, very briefly, on, on, you know, our response and, uh, what the, um, the standard is, national standard is as far as responding to these types of incidents.
Yeah, so, um, one of the big misconceptions regarding active shooter, uh, incidences, everybody thinks it's like a tactical team that's gonna come in and deal with the situation.
Or, or, I'm, I'm, I'll just, or SWAT, you know, it's, it's not the SWAT team you see in the, the gear with the, the, for lack of a better term, machine guns, that, that typically responds to those? That's after the fact.
So that's, that's one of the big, you know, misconceptions, is that a SWAT team's gonna be coming in- going to be coming in and dealing with this situation, and obviously, we've learned over the years from the, just, it seems like countless school shootings, active schoo-, active shooter incidents across the nation, that, that's not the way to deal with it, not waiting for a SWAT team, it's got to be an immediate response.
That, that standard changed with Columbine, so, pre-Columbine, the standard was to wait for this SWAT team to respond, and then make entry, and then identify the threat.
And that seems to be what they did in Texas, correct? They were waiting?
Since Columbine, since, I would wait for all the facts to come out, but since Columbine, things have changed.
Can I, can I just add something to? Yesterday morning, the mayor, a call for a meeting, I had with the school superintendent and his entire team, along with management from the police department, that Paul, that the chief was there, the chief was there, to kind of go over all of the internal controls related to this kind of event happening, that things could be strengthened, if not, you know, or, or anything that the Utica Police Department could do and that, so, that, I, I don't know, chief, if you want to just talk a little bit about that, that we're constantly looking at how strengthened-
Sure. Well, yeah, so, well, I think, I'll just, so the response is that, the first, the first officer respond is, they're, where our training is, you go in and you eliminate the threat, best you can. I mean, it's, it's, whether they're by themselves-
First person on the scene.
Whoever gets there, whoever gets called, the, the, like Heather said, we have a good relationship with our school district, we have an armed officer in every school, there's Utica police officers in Proctor, Donovan, and JFK, there's county sheriffs in all the elementary schools, all of whom are armed, their job there is to stop a threat. And we, we, we met, as we met yesterday with the superintendent, Principal Proctor, we went over, we just talked about the systems in place, made sure that, you know, we were all comfortable with what's in place, we identified some things we're going to improve upon, but we're in that constant, because we have these officers, it's been a long-term relationship with the school district over 30 years, where we've had armed security in the schools, because of that relationship, you know, we, we, it's, it's a good system that we have in place. You know, things can always be improved upon, and we're always looking to do that, but the fact that we have armed security, armed police officers in all the schools is, there's nothing that's foolproof, right?
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief Noonan.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
All set, Celeste?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to close the pre-cock, the pre-meeting conference, and take a five-minute break, Councilman DeBrango?
You've got to give them a chance to get up there and figure out what they've got.
Evening, everyone. We're going to start the regular meeting, June 1st, 2022. The time is now 7:15. The meeting will come to order. The city clerk will call the rule.
Ayello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo, Testa, DeBrango, all present.
All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council. Okay, the next order of business is the minutes. Do I hear a motion second to dispense the reading of the minutes?
Make a motion.
Second.
Williamson, second by Friend. Anybody oppose the dispense? Okay. Next up, there's no public hearing tonight, so the public hearing is now canceled. Over. Next up is the public comment period, and we have two speakers tonight. The first speaker is Tom Carcone. All right, the common council has provided you with a copy of Section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes, I am.
All right, please state your name. You have three minutes.
As you know, I'm Tom Carcone, and I'm president of IFF Local 32, and I wrote you all a letter today. I'd like to start off, the short period that I have to speak, on legislation that impacts all of our members, and we should have us seated at the table to discuss, but I'm denied. First, I'd like to start off by commending Chief Noonan for the way he advocates and fights for his members and the safety of their members on the streets. Everybody here knows staffing means safety. Everybody knows it when it comes to police. Everybody knows it when it comes to nursing homes. Everybody knows it when it comes to nursing, but we don't know it when it comes to fire department or EMS services. All of a sudden, increased staff doesn't mean more safety, or we need to question that. I gave you a whole laundry list of our increase in challenges, our increase in risks, our increase in need for our department now, and you watch it every day as our second alarm fires come in. So you sit here today, and our chief can't sit in front of you and tell you, yes, we need more? I will. The employees will tell you, they will. We do need more. That's our employees. You need to hear it? I'm elected to represent them. We need more, if you need to hear it clear. If anybody doesn't like Local 32 because we didn't endorse in your race, or maybe we endorsed somebody against you, or maybe you just don't like Tom Carcone, or maybe this is all just politics, but it doesn't matter. The only people that are suffering are the citizens that we serve. Our job, 124 of your employees', job becomes more dangerous, and the services we provide to the people in the city of Utica become lesser. Strengthen those services, protect your employees. Are those concepts gone just because of politics? Just because it's the fire department? You just added five police officers, and they need more. I'm not comparing, but whenever it comes to us, it gets kicked aside, ignored, or any excuse of why not. There's no financial cost. It's a wash. You heard Mr. DeBrango. You heard the budget director. If the budgets aren't going to be filled yet, it's a wash. And if we get the safer grant, it's additional jobs for free. Make a small investment, four positions, a small investment into our department, and return some respect and dignity to the people that are serving you. The people that aren't even showing up anymore because they're so discouraged and so disgusted. They don't deserve that. They give 100%, regardless every time they watch these meetings from their phones, because it's not worth their time to come anymore. What about your people? Are you doing anything for them?
No.
That's all I got to say. Shame on anybody that doesn't believe that more men for us doesn't make it safer for us and safer for the people of this city. And if the chief can't say it, I will.
Thank you. Up next, we have Donna Beckett.
Hello, everybody.
The common council has provided you with a copy of Section 32-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Donna Beckett.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I haven't spoken in two or three months, but I did bring the paper of what I had said two or three months ago, because I knew I wanted to repeat some of it. And what I said back then was, I've been thinking about this for a long time, and most recently since the summer, because everywhere I go, over and over, I hear residents bring up the same thought, and that is to take actions, to do things that are for the common good. So I also wanted to, I had listed, and I wanted to remind and repeat everyone that sometimes there are mistakes made, and sometimes there are things that have to be deeply questioned, and it's very common knowledge about the mayor and the term extensions. It's common knowledge about the parking garage, about Kelverman Center, about the hospital downtown. And so also, one of the faults would be the master plan to have had local residents spend a couple of years of their time coming together, what, $200, $250,000, and to have that ignored. So another reason why I came tonight, too, is the fact that I was hoping Nathaniel would come. Nathaniel spoke last time as a Utica resident, and I was so happy to hear him speak, and he was talking about growing up in Utica and what kind of services were available. Matter of fact, I followed him out, he and his companion, out into the driveway, and I encouraged, I said, please come back. And we talked about, you could please come back, please talk to the council. It also has to do with what the mayor does. So anyway, you guys, I know, I've been coming here five, six years. I do it for several reasons, but one thing I want to say is that you guys work very hard, and I do see that. I see that. Also, I'm really grateful that the caucus is out in this room and not in that little room with the tight space. So it's always good to hear the conversations, and there's always been, five or six years, I've seen the personalities. I've seen the personal agendas. I've seen all of those things. But anyway, it's not about me, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have one more speaker. Hamza Sinanaj. The common council has provided you with a copy of Section 32-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
Please state your name. You have three minutes.
My name is Hamza Sinanaj, and I'm here to comment on the recent events of last week and everything that I've been seeing up till now. You know, it's, I came in, I think, three, four months ago, talking about reopening the psych center, about, you know, mental health issues I've been noticing in the city. And last week was a real bloodbath, and I really think, I don't know what it takes to maybe get a YouTube video going or some sort of answer to the problem, but we seem to have a very big building on the west side. And for us to ignore it, and while all these massacres are going on, and not to cop on YouTube or do a social media push or anything toward the reopening of the psych center, it just looks really bad on us in general. And I don't know, it just hurts deeply. It hasn't been mentioned from the mayor or from anybody. I called the mayor's office, and they said, we do not comment on mental health. Well, you know, at this point, I mean, from what you've seen of last week, I mean, this is, this is getting very, very dangerous. And, you know, the fire department came in. I don't know what he was yelling about, but there seem to be a lot of angry men. I don't know, maybe it's, maybe he's having, there is an issue with the fire department, but I think it's deeper than that. I think he's trying to tell you something. I don't think men are happy there for some reason. And the psych, the reopening of the psych center is a very important solution to the problem that we're having, you know? It's, if you guys are watching the news or the discourse that's going on, but it really feels like people are about to get at each other for some reason. And a good answer to this would be probably healthcare for men, the psych center, bringing back in the old sign-in sheet. It worked back in the olden days. I don't see why it wouldn't work now. The fact that we're silent about all this, I feel like we're going to bring bad karma on us, that something bad is going to happen here to us. And there's no need for us to lose loved ones or lose children, or God forbid, something bad happened here, you know? I think we should provide a solution before things get really serious, because, you know, all in all, I'm very worried about the behavior of men around me and people in positions like the fire department, police department. I've seen strange behavior from everybody, man. And I think it's a lot deeper than what you think. And, you know, I'm hoping that somebody would champion this clause already.
You have 30 seconds.
It's very important, you know? It's very important to me, you know, especially all these years in Utica. I've noticed there's been a mental health problem for the last 30 years. Now it seems, but we had a lot of nonprofits, a lot of social work. We're able to keep it down here, but other cities are just, they're in trouble. It's over, man. They're in a lot of trouble, you know? So, you know, I don't know what you guys got to do, but your silence is beginning to look like complicity or accomplices to this of some sort. It's looking very strange. I've talked to other people about this issue. There's a mental block. They don't want to even get near it of some sort. It's really weird. But the reopening of the psych center is not a controversial issue. It's not something you shouldn't talk about. It's nothing to be scared about. It's not going to hurt you. God forbid you save children's lives or elderly African-American people's lives. It's not going to affect our city government whatsoever. Maybe somebody's paying you money to keep you quiet. I don't know. But I don't know what's happening. But honestly, you know, somebody really needs to speak up. I don't know.
All right. Thank you, Hamza. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We do not have any common council guests this evening. Are there any communication from the mayor? I will read the communications from Mayor Robert Paul Mary. Mayor, message to the common council. Non-containerized green waste pickup ended last week. All green waste must be containerized moving forward. The city of Utica has entered into a shared service agreement with the town of Deerfield to commence work along the city/town border to combat flooding. More details will be announced later this week. To promote and build positive relationships between the city youth and public safety, the city is accepting Utica Junior Cadet applications. Applicants must be currently in the 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, and a Utica resident, and will be paid $13.20 per hour to perform academy system work throughout the summer. This program is funded through the Utica Prosperity Initiative. More details and specific information about the program was disseminated earlier this morning. Nominations from local nonprofit organizations to serve on the Civil Public Safety Review Board will be reviewed by the administration this week. The nominees to serve on the board will be announced as early as next week. Also, Liberty Affordable Housing will be hosting a groundbreaking ceremony for the historical Oberlin Apartments 1431 Genesee Street on June 22nd at 2:00 PM. This is a major milestone in the restoration of the building and another example of how funding from the Utica Prosperity Initiative is fostering transformational changes in our community. Well, that is all from the mayor. Are there any miscellaneous communications?
No, there is none.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to petitions, remonstratives, and appeals. And I'm going to go with the UPD first, and then the UPD. Anything?
I just, I kind of feel it's important to say that over the last few years, I've had the opportunity to work with Chief Fingersaw. Been a lot of meetings with him behind closed doors. He's a consummate professional. He's got a passion for the fire department. He's got a long family history with the fire department. He's always, I've seen him advocate for his men and women. It's, but, you know, I can relate. It's lonely at the top. There's a balance between what you can do for your personnel and budgetary concerns and other factors, so I just, I've seen him in action. I know what he's all about, and, you know, he's got a love and a passion for the fire department, and I've been in the position to see other chiefs who, you know, didn't share that passion or concern, and I just wanted to express my...
Couldn't agree with you more. Corporation counsel.
I just wanted to note that I'm working on the amendments to the zoning code for the convenience store stuff. I should have stuff to everyone, I'm hoping, next week. I'm going to share it with the judge for his review, and then any necessary amendments will be sent to planning board, and then whatever is not necessary for planning board, I will submit to the council.
Thank you. Thank you. Coach commissioner?
Okay, a few things. Number one, I echo what Chief Noonan said, and I think it was great of him to say it, and I, Chief Fingersaw doesn't agree to. I can't always say the same thing about that Chief Noonan, but I'm not here to, he's fine. I mean, you know, whatever. He was talking a lot about Hughes. The better kids go to Jones. But one thing I want to say related to codes is, so when a house has high grass litter, the types of things that, like, you see from a curb, one of the tools we have is to abate it. And by abating it, we give them proper warning, and then our parks department comes and clears and cleans the property. So we've been getting a lot of calls that properties haven't been cleared and cleaned. And the parks department isn't able to fill its part-time jobs this year as quickly as it has in past years. And they're down. We're bringing in some help in some ways, but they're down about 12 workers right now. So number one, you urge patience on the residents that are waiting for us to respond, because the guys that are there are working really hard, and they got new equipment, and they're able to do more faster, but when you're short 12 people, it's hard. And we're working on ways to build that back up. But number two, you can help us prevent it by not getting in that position in the first place and just cutting your grass. You know, just be a good neighbor. So I wanted to say that, and the last thing I wanted to say, and I'll be done on premise, is, you know, I was a private police reformer, and the cadet corps is a big thing, and I'm not sure if everybody knows that. So one of the issues are, we have to have a variety of our residents get interested in becoming police officers and firefighters. And this gives them a chance to not only be interested in the job, to not only learn the job, to not only have somebody work with them all through until they're old enough and eligible to take the job, so that they can do well on the civil service test, so they can do well on the physical exam, and so they can put themselves in a position of knowing people in the departments that they might not have. That's a big thing. I'm not sure any other municipality in New York State does it. Rochester has a program, but I think it's not as good. And, but on top of that, instead of just pay them, so it's not like a volunteer thing that you can do after school. It's like, no, we'll pay you to work with our police and firefighters and to learn to be one in hopes of getting a more locally grown and more diverse force. And I think that's a big deal, and I hope that the shortages that we're seeing in our seasonal work for grass cutting don't extend to the cadet corps.
Thank you. Chief Fingersaw, you, Utica Fire Department.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Fire Department conducted over 720 transports and ambulances last month. One thing we have noticed is that there's been some delays at the emergency rooms, so they, we've been inundated, and they have ambulances tied up for an hour or two when we're trying to transfer patient care, so that's leaving a shortage of ambulances. The other thing is, there was nine working fire incidents in the city in the month, in the past, in the month of May, and recently, we've had five working fire incidents in vacant buildings. So I would just ask everyone to be cognizant of the vacant buildings in your district or your neighborhoods. If people are going in and out of them, please contact 911, and we'll get the police over there and check it out, and make sure that we can kind of stem this tide that we're seeing right now.
Thank you, chief. All right. Up next, we have the first district council member, Katie Ayello.
Thank you. A few things tonight. I want to thank, well, first off, the fire department. There's quite a few of you who have sat down with me and just really spent the time to explain all parts of your department for me, you too, chief, and it's been a huge help just to, no question, it's been a stupid question with you guys, and I just, I appreciate it. It helps learn, and it helps to move this forward, to do what's best for your department. Second, I want to thank codes. I feel like I've given you guys a lot to do the past couple of weeks, and I, as soon as I send out an email, within 40 minutes, it seems to be done or handled, and it's been a pattern of your department, of these immediate responses. And constituents are thanking you too. Third, something, it's sort of a weekly recap, but also part of an invitation, something that's organically started in the district, is kind of these living room chats. I did one in 1-8 last night, 1-3 this afternoon, and basically, if anybody in the district wants to have me over, and we'll have the whole neighborhood in, and we just kind of go over all your concerns and ideas, that's kind of been the most efficient use of our time. So, or I can have you over too, whichever works, and let's keep those ones going. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Second district council member, Robert Burmaster.
Thank you. I don't have anything tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Third district council member, Celeste Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you, councilman. Today is June 1st, so I wish everybody a happy Pride Month. On Monday, this coming Monday, the city of Utica will be rising, will be flying the pride flag up above City Hall. That's going on at 3:00 PM on Monday. I invite everybody to come down for that. Pride Month is a really, among other things, an important opportunity to remind young people, young LGBTQ people who often suffer, and that they are not alone, that we accept them, that there are people in the world who will love them. And Pride Month is a really important opportunity for all of us to reach out in whatever way to those young people and make sure that they know that they have a place in the world, which they do. So, but join us on Monday as we fly the flag up over City Hall, the pride flag. Thanks very much. That's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Fourth district council member, Frank Miola, also majority leader.
Thank you, President Pro Temp, Frank DeBrango. Basically, we're hitting a lot of, people are out there, and they're seeing a lot of things in the city. We're getting trees that are requested to get trimmed. We're getting speeders in different areas. We're getting potholes, the famous potholes. So there is a website that the mayor has for everybody, if they also want to go on the website and, you know, put you on the list for a pothole repair. But they're calling in, and I appreciate all the people calling me. I'm going to do the best I could to accomplish it. There's also a different type of property that hasn't been maintained, where our city plows did some damage to their lawns, and we're going to fix them up. So those of us out there have these requests, again, we have a little pattern about the protocol and how I do it. And I'd like to thank everybody for calling, and please be patient, and we'll try to get everything done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, fifth district council member, Dennis Urban.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Melissa, for making the phone calls for me. The signs went up in one day after you made the phone calls to the sign shop. That was really great. And the people that made the complaints were really happy. Secondly, we're still going to have, there's still going to be a race, a race against racism on June 18th that's going to start at Kemble Park, around Johnson Park, down James Street, around Johnson Park and back. And that's still scheduled for June 18th as part of the Juneteenth activities that they have going on. Next, I want to thank the police department for their presence in the community. Sometimes I see four or five cars in a row going by, so they're really having a heavy presence in the neighborhood, and I think it's cut down on a lot of the crime. A lot of stuff that's going on is still going on in a lot of parts of the city, but we are getting less criminal activity in the cornhill area. So I thank you for that, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Next up, sixth district council member, Joseph Beatrice.
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the administration for, and the town of Deerfield for partnering up to take care of our, the main problem we have over on Cedar Brook Crescent. And hopefully, this is the first of many jobs that we work together with Deerfield. It's the first time, you know, it's very good that they are working with us, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. All right. Next up, councilman-at-large and minority leader, Mark Williamson. You have the floor.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, councilwoman-at-large, Samantha Classimo Testa.
I'm all set this evening.
And I will do the same. I have nothing to add. So we'll be moving on to the proposed legislation for this evening, and we're going to move to resolution number one. We have a motion to move resolution number one, authorizing sale of wine and beer to the Jewish Community Federation of the Moak Valley. Miola, I have a second. Friend? Okay, name of the sponsors, the Jewish Community Federation of Moak Valley. The name of the event is Jewish Culture and Food Festival. The date of the event, Sunday, June 12, 2022, from 12:00 noon to 8:00 PM. The location of the event, Jewish Community Center, 2310 Anitus Street, Utica, New York, 13501. Your votes? Your votes? Next piece of legislation is Resolution Number Two. Sale of 125, 127 Grove Place. Do I have any motion to move it? Call for public hearing? Yep. On Wednesday, June 15, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Motion, Mr. President? Mr. President?
Miola, second. Friend? Go ahead. Call for a public hearing. DB Realty Solutions, Dimitri Brudsky, to create additional parking at 125, 127 Grove Place. $750 is the purchase. Your votes? I don't have a switch.
90s adopted.
Mr. President Protem, I'd like to move the next piece into committee. Ordinance number three.
All right. In committee by Miola, second.
Second.
Anybody opposed to putting it in committee? Okay, it's in committee. We just read it. It's regarding 125, 127 Grove Place to create additional parking for his property at $750. Next up.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the Thursday rule for the rest of legislation.
Second.
Friend, motion by Miola, amending the Common Council Rules of Order, Section 3-253, Preservation of Order. Do I have a motion to move to the floor? Miola, second. Friend? Go ahead. Thank you, Clerk.
Amending the Common Council Rules of Order, Section 3-2-53, Preservation of Order. Be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York, the Section 3-2-53 shall be amended as follows. A, when a member of the Common Council or department head or any elected official is called to order, he or she shall immediately sit down and seize all verbal communications and the presiding officer shall pass upon the point of order. B, anyone refusing to seize all verbal communications, be the presiding officer, shall be deemed to be in contempt of the Common Council and shall be liable to censor by the Common Council. C, the censor of any official proceeding of the Common Council, whether committee, pre-meeting conference, or meeting, shall reserve the right to temporarily censor any member in contempt until the current main motion is rescinded, voted on, tabled, or otherwise completed. Your votes?
What is this for? I'm sorry. Is it calling for the vote? Yes. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't get a chance to qualify my vote.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I'm just going to leave a brief at this. And I've been thinking about this all day. Government is messy and discourse, and being silenced is dangerous. But I wouldn't expect that from anyone else that would want to run a dictatorship. I will say, at any point in time, I will not follow the rules of order, but I've never overturned a referendum. So.
Councilman Beatrice.
So I agree with everything on this here. I'm voting no because I wanted to talk in person to President Goleme. I've been watching common council meetings since, for years, and there's been a lot of stuff that gone on in this council that I think that we're going to say something that we're going to overturn. I'm more concerned about what council people, how they act, okay? How they act outside of council, okay? Different stuff on social media and stuff that's totally unacceptable. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about us being passionate on the floor and over talking to somebody. So I just wanted to know that. I think we're all passionate. We all care about this job, or we wouldn't have ran for it. But we need to have respect for everybody. And I agree that this is what it says. It just was too fast for me and I'm not totally sure why it came up all of a sudden. So that's why I'm voting this way. Thank you.
Okay. Point taken. I just want to remind everybody, we did receive an email earlier today regarding this legislation from President Goleme, just giving a further explanation. So if anybody had any issues, I'm sure we can contact him at a later date. But we are going to move it to the floor. Do I get a motion to move it?
Councilman, quick question. Can you, can we actually just read President Goleme's email into the record since it is regarding this legislation, please?
Do you want to read it? It's a long one. My clerk will handle it for me. Thank you. For the record.
Counsel, please see the following message regarding the proposed amendment regarding the rules. The following subsection is proposed to be added to Section 3-2-53, Preservation of Order. See, the chair of any official proceeding of the Common Council, whether committee, pre-meeting conference, or meeting, shall reserve the right to temporarily censor any member in contempt until the current main motion is rescinded, voted on, tabled, or otherwise completed. I was approached and asked how to basically temporarily censor someone for five minutes if they were deemed in contempt. Above is basically what I came up with, which is essentially what a chair can already do. As it sits right now, under Robert's rules, the chair of any proceeding of our body, being the sanctioned council meeting, the pre-meeting conference, or committee of the whole, recognizes who has and maintains the floor, so they may participate in discussion, and the chair may decide throughout a discussion if topics have been covered and may not continue to hand the floor to council people once a point has been made and no new points are raised in debate. The proposed amendment in practice does no more than what a chair already has the ability to do to direct a meeting and preserve order. If this is passed, the term "a temporary censor" simply defines in writing that if a chair finds a council person in contempt during discussion, they may be simply not recognized until a vote is taken or the current discussion is complete and new business is started. The term "censor" is used as well as "contempt" in subsections A and B, so it was reused in the proposed Section C. This new subsection will not give a chair of a committee of the whole or the pre-meeting conference the ability to censor a council person permanently or even for the duration of a meeting, as it will expire as soon as the topic of discussion or motion is complete. While under Robert's rules, which we are bound by, a chair already has the capability, this proposed subsection makes it specific in our adopted rules. As for full censoring of a council person, this must happen at a sanctioned meeting by majority vote, and giving that ability to a single person would be a potentially bad decision. However, if the council would like to take a majority vote to add this to the rules, then those are the rules we will drive the council by, and it will end up duly specified in our rules and in Robert's rules that you must have recognition from the chair to obtain the floor for open discussion and debate. Most of all, no matter what rules are passed, under our new structure, we are doing quite a bit in one evening, sometimes starting at 4:30 and going through the end of the main meeting. Heated debate will happen, and it is expected. Keeping discussion, whether heated or not, germane to the business or motion at hand, is the most important thing we can strive for. Council members should only be held in contempt if rules are not abided by and order cannot preserved by the chair. If we simply do not like what is being said, that is handled by the First Amendment, and if deemed on topic, shall be allowed. Lastly, while this may be difficult, what takes place outside the sanctioned meetings, on the radio, social media, and other venues, will be how the people judge us as a whole, but we must not bring that into the council meetings. We need to concentrate on the legislation at hand and how it affects our city, its residents, commercial enterprises, and city employees, and set whatever differences we have aside while processing the business of the city.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Sponsored by Councilmembers Miola and Williamson, amending the Common Council Rules of Order, Section 3-2-53, Preservation of Order. Do I have a motion to move it?
We already did that, didn't we?
We already voted?
So it's your vote, right?
Thank you.
Okay. 70s adopted.
I'm not as smooth as President Goleme, but I'm trying. All right. Proposed ordinance number five is up next, sponsored by Councilmember Burmaster Handicap Parking Locations.
Put the timeout, Chair.
Move it. Burmaster makes the motion, second by Miola. Handicap Parking Locations, be it ordained that Section 2-16-378 Schedule W, handicap parking locations be amended to include the following. Court Street, handicap parking for one vehicle, location, 716 Court Street. Be it further ordained, that the proper signage be erected where necessary. Your votes?
90s adopted.
Proposed ordinance number six is next on the agenda. This must be unanimous. This is the first time out. Sponsored by Councilmembers Miola and Williamson, ordinance amending speed limits. It's a few pages long here. I just want to see if we can move it and then I'll explain to you what it is.
Motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Miola, second by Burmaster. Basically, what we're doing is we're, the speed limit shall be 15 miles per hour in designated school zones pursuant to New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law for the following schools and a list, you know, all the schools that are located within the city limits. Everybody pretty much knows what they are. And then we have maximum speed limits for various streets throughout the city, and it's all listed under this ordinance. And there are various speed limits for different streets throughout the city. So is everybody ready to vote on this? Okay, let's vote. Same thing with the next piece of legislation, proposed ordinance number seven. It's sponsored by Councilmembers Miola and Williamson, ordinance amending speed limits. I need a motion to move, Miola, second Beatrice. Ordinance amending speed limits, be it ordained that 2-16-137 of Utica City Code regarding the is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 2-16-137, exceeding established speed limits. No person shall operate a vehicle on any highway or private road open to public motor vehicle traffic at the rate of speed at exits of the maximum posted speed limits as established in this article. Your votes?
90s adopted.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution Number Eight, sponsored by Councilmember Friend. Civilian Public Safety Board Appointment. Do I have a motion to move it? Katie Ayala, second. Burmaster. Civilian Public Safety Board, be it resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person to civilian Public Safety Board in and for the City of Utica, New York, for a two-year term commencing June 1, 2022, and ending June 1, 2024. Mona Lisa Furman, 1215 West Street, Utica, New York, 13501. Your votes?
90s adopted.
Next piece is Resolution Number Nine, sponsored by Councilmember Williamson, Civilian Public Safety Board. Want to move it? Okay.
Melissa, please clear the board.
We have one motion to move, second. Burmaster. Be it resolved that the Common Council does hereby appoint the following person to the civilian Public Safety Board in and for the City of Utica, New York, for a two-year term commencing June 1, 2022, and ending June 1, 2024. John Chichorelli, 1019 McQuade Ave, Utica, New York, 13501. Your votes?
90s adopted.
Okay. Is there anything that we want to move from committee at this time?
Yes, I've got to make a motion to pull Ordinance Number 10.
Okay.
Second.
Ordinance Number 10, sponsored by Colasimo Testa. It is.
Rescinding section.
Move from committee? Do I need a vote on that?
Any opposed? That's all you say.
Any opposed? Moving it from committee?
Nope.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to, I don't have a second. I don't need a second, correct?
No, we already did it.
Okay. So it's, be it ordained that Section 2-16-369 Schedule N, speed limits will be rescinded to include the following. And it's got numerous.
Nope.
Numerous streets. You don't have to read it. Just rescinding it.
Okay. We're going to rescind that.
And it's a yes vote.
Section 2-16-369. Your votes on rescinding?
It's a yes.
90s to rescind.
Thank you.
The last piece, I'd like to make a motion to pull out is Ordinance Number Seven.
Any opposed to removing proposed ordinance number seven out of committee? It is dated 5/11/22, amending the composition of the Bureau of Fire for the City of Utica, New York, sponsored by Councilmember Colasimo Testa. No one's opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to amend.
The first motion's going to follow, Frank.
It already did. Came out of committee, Samantha. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know. I didn't hear it because that's why I said the motion didn't follow through. I need a second to pull out of committee.
Okay. Got a second, come out of committee.
Any opposed?
Here's what would be my recommendation, was, would you vote on it as is? If it doesn't pass, then would you run the amendment?
No. When the motion to amend comes first, if the amendment fails, Frank, then you go.
Right. And it didn't fail, Frank. It went through. So that's why the motion's going to follow through.
We didn't have a motion to amend yet. I didn't make the motion yet. Could I make a motion to amend?
Because the first motion didn't finish.
First motion was to move it from committee.
Point of order.
Thank you.
Our attorney says that has to be voted on first, the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Judge. The proposed, yes, thank you. So I'd like to make the amendment. No, Frank, she just said the proposed amendment, Samantha. Hit this one.
Time out. I'll have the judge speak on this behalf. Would you speak on this? Councilmember Testa said she wants.
Your Honor, there's a proposed amendment to the legislation that came out of committee. The proposed amendment would like to be considered and voted on. After that amendment's voted on, either yes or no, then we go for the legislation. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Judge.
If the amendment fails, then you vote on what's prepared before us. If the amendment passes, you could vote for, don't vote for it as amended.
Thank you, Your Honor. May I continue?
Judge, so for clarification, if I make a motion to pull something out of committee, that motion has to finish first.
He already said.
And you have to take a vote on that. You're making a motion to pull out of committee for a vote.
Just a second. As your question, as if the ballot's before the council, now there's a motion before, who made the motion?
I did.
There's a motion for an amendment. Was it seconded?
No. It was a motion to pull out of committee for proposed ordinance number seven.
For a vote.
Which is.
No. We didn't take a vote on that yet.
So we didn't vote on it yet.
No. This matter in committee, is voted on individually, you take it out of committee.
Okay.
Once it's taken out of committee before the body, if the body wishes to amend the matter that's now before them, that was in committee, they may do so if they have the bygones of amendment.
Okay.
If it is amended, then the amendment is incorporated in the ordinance as amended, and then you vote on that.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for a vote on the amendment to okay the amendment of proposed ordinance number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend. Yes, I got to make it first. I'd like to amend the proposed legislation to firefighters and firefighters and firefighters EMT, 85 to 81, which will give us a standard complement of the one we started with, 124.
Miola, Friend. So we are going to take a vote on the amended form from amending the compensation of the Bureau for the City of Utica. Your votes?
I want to vote no on that. I screwed up there.
Let's revote.
Yeah.
Clear the board.
So just for clarification, we're depleting four firefighters and adding four lieutenants. That's what this motion states?
Correct.
That's what it states. That's what it states, that's what the judge said that we have to do.
Okay, so we're, we're deleting four firefighters, that's what we're doing. We're deleting four firefighters.
From this.
We're adding four lieutenants.
Chief, are you okay with taking away four firefighters? Chief, are you okay with taking away four firefighters?
She is not. Said it multiple times, we are short first down.
So this is against your wish, taking away four firefighters, as the chief of the department?
I've asked for four lieutenants.
Thank you.
I've asked for the complement to increase my...
Would you ask for the compliment, for the change of lieutenants, had you would've known that your composite, that your, that your complement would've stayed the same? I mean, it, would you have asked for four lieutenants, knowing that you would've deleted four firefighters from that complement?
Okay, I believe we went through this discussion earlier.
I mean, come on, though.
I know, but we went through this discussion earlier, right now we have to vote, the vote is, is what it is, there's nothing we can do, so let's just vote on it and move on, and maybe we could have another one next, next meeting. I, yes, we just voted.
No, we don't vote on anything, we're just, we're just voting on removing four firefighters from the government.
Increasing four, that's right.
Mr. President, I'd like to, I'd like to vote on it as amended.
Number two. Number two and number seven have to vote.
It's number two. Should I vote? Can I qualify my vote?
Yes, sir.
So I qualify before I vote, right?
Yes, yes, you may.
Well, you know, I, I know there's a need for firemen, and, and I know four's not enough, I don't know what the magic number is, I, through attrition, all I wanna do is, I wanna re- readdress this real soon, so we can fix it. I wanna make sure he gets his lieutenants, get him trained, get him on the job, do what he needs to do to fill that lieutenant position. When, when it comes time, I don't care when, the next meeting, we, we can re-discuss four more firefighters, six more firefighters. Get a, get a realistic, realistic number from, from Heather, and, and Heather say, well, you know, it's, it's not the, the 38,000, 40,000, that it's a package, it's gonna be maybe 90,000, and, and it's gonna be like 360,000 compared to, you know, just, uh, let's just get everything settled. I don't have a problem with the fire department, police department, DPD, I know these departments need people, and, 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 and we gotta make a difference sooner or later. What's giving the lieutenants today, let them go and, and, and train them, they can't just put them on the job, they gotta send them away, they gotta train them, it's gonna take, it's gonna be a process. Uh, who knows if it's gonna even done by, by September, because I don't know how long the training program is, I don't know where they gotta go, I don't know what their details, but, you know, we can't keep on tying our department heads and, and, and expect them to do the job for us, and, and not give them the tools to.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna qualify their vote? Okay, so we just finished the amendment, now we have to vote on the actual legislation amended.
They're putting, they're putting, they're putting, the guys in that department, and that's DM Shane.
I want a lieutenant, and I wanna readdress.
Yeah, that's what we did.
Go ahead, put a whole department against the chief, don't personal being so rough.
Okay.
You voted.
Amendment passed. Now, Mr. President, may I move, may I move the legislation now? Uh, Mr. President, as the legislation stands with amended, can we call for a vote?
Okay, and, and the vote is, uh, the amendment is from 85 to 81 firefighters, fire lieutenants are changed from 22 to 26, which is a total of 124, which we've been discussing this for the last month.
Motion to move, Mr. President.
All right, motion to move it, Miola, second, Friend. Okay, your votes?
And I'd like to qualify my vote. Can I still qualify my vote?
Mr. President, Ms. Ayello asked to qualify her vote, please.
Apologies.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. And I'm not, I'm just using the same, yeah, President. Um, with this, I just wanna emphasize, I feel like a lot of people will see this vote tonight as firefighters aren't increasing by four at some point, and that's just kind of a false dilemma, it just seems like a misrepresentation. I think this might have been a, since we can't hire them till the fall anyways, maybe this was a symbolic, uh, representation of if we added the four today, and for me, it's a formality of, we'll find out with the safer grant, and we will be, I will be voting to add more when that comes, and that's what I wanted to add, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
I just wanna make, I just wanna make just one, one point.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
I designated that chair over there as the timeout chair for when somebody gets held in contempt by, by council.
Before we go, can I, just for the sake of cleaning up?
Why not? Go ahead. I'm, I'm easier than President Goleme, I'll let it go.
I'd like to make a motion to discharge ordinance number eight, ordinance number nine, and ordinance number 13, just so that the clerks don't have to make nine copies of them two weeks from now.
The ones that are in committee now?
I'll second that one, Mr. President.
All right.
Yep.
I'm a no vote, I'm a no vote on all three.
Anybody opposed? Discharging?
Uh, somebody didn't vote, so I'm, you, you could take a vote on it, Frankie, it'd be easier, probably. Vote for the discharge.
Votes for the discharge of proposed eight, nine, and?
Eight, nine, and?
13.
Eight yeas.
Motion to close, Mr. President.
Now, second motion by Miola, second from Friend, motion to adjourn. Have a good evening.
Thank you.